Check one, two. Yeah, there's a master control here that says volume. Yeah, there is a volume. That tells the whole thing. Hello, hello. It's an image system. So I'm gonna mute all mic. Testing. So the person here, you have to just look at this. And then if you want your mic turned off, you want to turn the other side on you. I will. And you know mic. Yeah, now it's, now it's got the picture. Check one, two. Well, no, you don't have to do that.
Just say you're gonna stop it.
Okay. So who is this? Who is this number? Is this seven? Who is this? I gotta knock back that thing.
So this is number two.
Oh, three? Nobody sits over here.
That one should really be the power point. We might have to reorganize.
Yeah. Yeah, no one sits here, so.
Pretty loud.
Okay, this is four.
This is probably five.
Four or five? Work. Two. Four. And then five is over there. But what's the one next of five? Oh, cool. Do you have a wired mouse now? Yeah, I'm using one for the Vodcast.
Dad.
Dad.
...
Hi, how are you?
Are we ready? Okay, let's go. I'll call the meeting to order for the July 8th, 2025 City Council Special Meeting. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Council members are present excluding Council members Blom and Weber.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Rent comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda items. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Terrific. Now's the time for public comments on closed session items. Are there any public comments? Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I was rather surprised to see the announcement of this special meeting shortly before the long weekend. And considering that closed sessions, as I understand it, are supposed to be reserved for matters which, if discussed in public, might harm in some way either the city or the people being discussed. When I looked at the agenda, I'm having trouble seeing where you're going to have very much to talk about that would actually justify a closed session. The first item is apparently to discuss two recruitments that are pending. And the purpose of that exemption to the Brown Act, as I understand it, is primarily to protect the privacy of the candidates who you might be considering. One of the recruitments is for a city clerk, and while the city clerk left about a month ago, I checked on the city website as of noon today. There was no announcement yet of an opening. So it seems hard to believe that you have any candidates yet to discuss for that position. And as the city manager, there was a press release, I guess it was last week, saying our current city manager is hoping to retire in December, six months from now. And it's good to be getting an early start on that. But again, the position, the opening for it has not yet been advertised. So I really don't think you have any candidates to discuss in closed session. And what especially troubled me is in the press release, it said that the closed session was going to be held to discuss the process of recruiting a new city manager. And the process, to me, that involves things like what qualities you'll be looking for in a city manager, whether you're going to have a national search or look just in Southern California or just locally. Those don't impinge on the privacy of anybody. And I think those are matters that should be discussed publicly with public input before you make a decision about them. And that this would not be the forum for doing that. And the second item uses an exception that is related to compensation, and it lets you speak to your negotiators who are negotiating with, it says here, the city manager and the city clerk. Now, those negotiations seem to have been concluded because on tonight's agenda are the contracts that were the fruit of the negotiations. And so I can't imagine that you have any further instruction to give to the negotiators. You may be asking the negotiators why they came up with that compromise or whatever it is that they're presenting tonight. But again, whether it's a good outcome or a bad outcome, whether it should be approved or not, that is something that's on the calendar for tonight. And so I hope you will be discussing whether they're good or bad contracts tonight. And I especially hope that you won't disagree in private and then come back in public and unanimously approve them with no discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Adam Leverens. It's so bright and cheery in here with the windows drapes open. I share some of Mr. Mosher's concerns. But my primary one is the actual agenda item. It says, "Public employee appointment." I mean, that makes it sound like you could be appointing someone to these two positions as we're talking about substantial pay and benefit amounts. I'm hoping that this should have maybe said impending appointments or upcoming appointments or interim appointments. Like, is there going to be a recruitment process or interviews? Or are there pre-selected people for these positions? Mr. Mosher mentioned some news items, which I have read as well. And it sounds like Grace is willing to be here till the end of the year. So I just, there's a lack of clarity of what you're going to be discussing. And if you come back after closed session and say, "Hey, we picked two new people," I think that's improper. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Seeing no other public comments. City Attorney Aaron Harp, do you want to read the titles of our closed session items?
Yes, thank you. The City Council adjourned to closed session to consider the appointment of a city manager and city clerk, as well as discuss with the city's labor negotiators regarding the city manager and city clerk positions as well. All set forth on the agenda are four A and B. Thank you.
May we stand recessed? Thank you.
...
...
Been a full day. It's been a great day.
I talked to her. She's gonna come back. All right, ready to go? Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. We're gonna finish with closed session right now. So Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a closed session announcement this evening.
Okay, so before adjourned this meeting, I wanted to inform the public that we had a productive closed session. While not required by the Brown Act, the council has authorized me to make an announcement regarding the game plan for appointing the next city manager. I will share that information toward the end of the regular meeting. So I'll adjourn the special meeting, and then I will begin our regular meeting. So I'll call the meeting to order for the July 8th City Council meeting, our regular meeting tonight. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
For the record, all members are present.
Okay, terrific. We'll now proceed to current business. Now is the time for invocation. That will be led by Pastor Adam Feichman with the Redeemer Presbyterian Church. There you are. Probably butchered that, didn't I?
It was close. Reverend Feichman, Redeemer Presbyterian. Let us pray. Almighty and triune God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we give you thanks and praise for all your mighty works. You are good and you do good. You are loving and you love abundantly. You are gracious and reckless toward us with your grace. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in community with other people and have dominion over your creation, a dominion that cares for your world, creates, cultivates, and celebrates the good, right, and beautiful all around us. We thank you for our city, Newport Beach, California. We seek and pray now for its welfare, peace, and prosperity. Thank you for the beauty of our beaches, harbor, back bay, hills, and parks. Thank you for our elected officials, businesses, organizations, healthcare institutions, schools, churches, families, and individuals that make our city a great place to live, work, and play. Fill us with gratitude for these good gifts that you lavish upon us. And as we enjoy such gifts, may we acknowledge that we don't deserve these good gifts. We're not worthy of your favor, for we've sinned against you in thought, word, and deed. We do things that we should not do, and we don't do things that we should do. We have not loved you with our whole heart, and we have not loved our neighbors as ourselves. And so now we appeal to Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for our sins. Forgive us. Remove our hearts of stone and give us new hearts. Thank you that Jesus not only died on the cross for us, but he rose from the dead to give us new life. Thank you that he has ascended into heaven, has given us his spirit, and now reigns as the sovereign king of kings over his kingdom. May his kingdom come and his will be done in Newport Beach as it is in heaven. May the lonely, especially the elderly, be welcomed. May the needy receive care. May the sick be healed. May the brokenhearted be comforted. And Lord Jesus, thank you for the civil government who serve as your ministers, your civil servants. I pray that they would acknowledge this calling and perform it faithfully. Be with our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement. Grant that they would never neglect or abuse their authority, but that they would act justly and love mercy. Keep them safe from harm as they serve our community. And I pray for this city council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for the common good of Newport Beach and its residents, and ultimately for your glory. We pray this all in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join us as we salute the greatest symbol of freedom in the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, terrific. So we have three presentations this afternoon, beginning with our very own mayor for the day. She's here with us today, Amelia Jenkins. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll do a photo together. Amelia and her entire family. We've been around the city today. Thank you to everyone who is supportive. We had our police chief, our fire chief, assistant city manager, city clerk, city attorney, public works, harbor department with the harbor master. It was a fun-filled day, and of course, utilities with Mark went over and walked on water. So I think our mayor had a great opportunity to see everything that existed in the city today. And, you know, Mayor Jenkins, thank you for all you did and continue to give me hope in the next generation and our future in this country. So I love your patriotism and all that you do here in the city of Newport Beach. So congratulations to you. So the proclamation, whereas the city of Newport Beach is proud to recognize young leaders who demonstrate outstanding civic curiosity, boundless energy, and a commitment to community spirit, Amelia Jenkins, an exceptional student at Our Lady Queen of Angels School, has been selected to serve as mayor for a day, making her the youngest member of her family to step into public service and participate in local government. Amelia approaches this honor with joy, enthusiasm, and in sincere love for her hometown, values that reflect the strong foundation built by her family and the vibrant neighborhood school that nurtures her. During her term as mayor for the day, Amelia took part in an exciting and educational day of civic engagement, including touring the city hall, the Newport Beach Police Department, Fire Station Number Three, Big Canyon Reservoir, and joining a scenic harbor tour with the harbor department, and of course, observing our city council meeting tonight. She might want to make a few legislative changes as well. She's an animal lover, so I think that's, she's after your heart, Council Member Grant. When she's not busy touring her city in an official capacity, Amelia can be found at the Fun Zone Arcade, boating in the harbor, or spending time with Cooper and Chloe, her two beloved dogs. Amelia has inspired all of us with her bright spirit, her love for her country, and her genuine dedication to learning how her city works. Now I, therefore, Joe Stapleton, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim Amelia Jenkins, Mayor for the Day in the City of Newport Beach. Congratulations. Would you like to join us, Amelia, for a photo? Okay, let's do it. Well, thank you, Mayor Jenkins. I really appreciate that. That was a lot of fun. And thank you to your family and your sister. We had a lot of fun today running around. So a lot to be proud of. Cool. Okay, our second presentation includes, and then you got another certificate you're gonna sign, and this is for a 98-year-old resident who lives in the Port Streets down the street from you guys. So Amelia likes to sign in pink, so I love that for you. That was really good. Okay, terrific. Our second presentation includes the recognition of Rick Stein, President and CEO of Arts, Orange County. Is, yeah, if you want to come up, and I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll give you the floor to say something. Okay, terrific. Whereas Rick Stein is a nationally respected arts leader, whose almost 50 years of service to the arts have significantly advanced cultural life in California. President and CEO of Arts, Orange County, Arts OC, for the past 17 years, Stein transformed the organization into a trailblazer among nonprofits, arts, and arts councils, serving as the region's leading advocate for the arts and arts education while acting as a trusted consultant to government, education, and nonprofit sectors. Stein's leadership has been widely recognized, including being awarded the statewide arts advocacy champion award from California Arts Advocates in 2025, the entrepreneur in the arts lifetime achievement award from the Pacific Corral in 2023, and Laguna Legend from the Laguna Playhouse in 2021, as well as being named, being named by the Orange County Register as one of OC's 100 Most Influential in 2020. That's really incredible. Rick Stein has a formative role in the arts culture in the city of Newport Beach as CEO of Arts OC, working with the city's arts commission for over a decade to curate the sculpture exhibition in the Civic Center Park, which we all know and love. In May of 2025, Governor Gavin Newsom appointed Stein to the prestigious California Arts Council, where he will work on a team of 11 members to establish policies and strategies to strengthen arts, business, and creative expressions in our communities. Therefore, I, Joe Stapleton, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Rick Stein for his steadfast leadership as an advocate for arts and culture in our community. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I only learned of this when I looked at the agenda over the weekend, so I am rather overwhelmed and delighted to receive this recognition from the city of Newport Beach, which I feel is my second home for all the efforts that we've engaged in here with you and your colleagues, and with past council members over the years, and past staff members, city management. It's been a real pleasure, and just have to say that of all the cities that we work with, Newport Beach has one of the most, one of the deepest and most abiding commitments to arts and culture through its arts commission and its arts programs. And we look forward to seeing that continue to grow over the years. I am now, as of last week, officially retired from my position with Arts, Orange County, and looking forward to enjoying it, enjoying what you put on here in arts and culture programs as a civilian.
Terrific.
So, thank you again.
Thank you for your service. Terrific. We'll take a photo? You want to say something? Yeah.
I just wanted to thank you personally, Rick. I've had the great pleasure of working with you for probably more than 15 years on a number of projects, and your expertise and acumen has been a great benefit to our city. And it's wonderful to learn that you're going to be going into this new role for the state, and you'll still continue to benefit not only the city of Newport Beach and Orange County, but the state as a whole. And we're lucky to retain you in that way. So good luck in your new endeavor, and don't forget us. Come back anytime. Thank you so much for all you've done for us.
Thank you, Council Member Grant.
It doesn't say Amelia anymore? What an upgrade for me. All right. Okay, so our final presentation will include the history of McFadden Square, Newport Beach, Newport's first downtown. So I'm gonna introduce Bill Abdel. For those of you who don't remember, this year, as your mayor, it's all about the history of the city of Newport Beach. So we're celebrating the people and the projects from the beginning of the city in 1906, and now we're moving into our first downtown, McFadden Square. And Bill is a local historian and runs the very, very popular Instagram account, Newport in the Rearview Mirror. So Amelia, when you get an Instagram account in the future, make sure you subscribe. He does a terrific job highlighting the history of our great city. So, Mr. Abdel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how you follow Amelia, but I will try. Here's 155 years and five minutes. We gotta go back to Newport Landing, Lower Castaways. This is where the first port was, Newport, but it was too... is where the first port was, Newport, but it was too dangerous, the harbor mouth. So the McFadden brothers who owned the port decided to move it to the peninsula, where the Newport Pier is today. And they moved all the buildings, floated them across the bay on barges. And that one, that one house at the, in the foreground, I believe, that was the first house on the peninsula. They moved it lock, stock, and barrel. Newport Wharf started the beginnings of a little downtown. There was a port, lumber company, fishing village. If you want to know how fishing was in Newport back in the day, just look at that picture. It was spectacular. But limited tourism. There was one road in and out of Newport Beach. It was dirt road from Santa Ana. So if you came down to the beach, it was a long journey. You took your horse and buggy usually, and you spent the night there. So here's the camping on the beach. This was, the fishermen had chantees like this. They also had cabins like this. And that's how you vacationed in Newport back in the day. The train that came from Santa Ana to the Wharf, and then later the trolley, that changed everything for Newport. Easy access for thousands of tourists, more residents. And in 1906, with 206 residents, Newport Beach Incorporated. All this created the start of a downtown, yeah, start of the downtown. There were stores, hotels, bars, including the stag in 1907, boarding houses, and that in the middle right, that was the first pavilion in Newport Beach. It was on the beach in basically what's Black East Parking Lot now. It had a tendency to catch fire for some reason, so it was built, I think, three different times. With incorporation, they started to get elements of a real city. They had the police and fire departments, utilities, phone operator. There were 30 phones in Newport Beach at the time, stores, and city hall. That building in the top left, those were the Southern Pacific Railroad offices. That's where the very first city council meeting was held, because the city clerk was a employee of the railroad. This is the first city hall. It was the grammar school right at the base of the peninsula, or I'm sorry, of the pier, Newport Pier. And again, there's the pavilion. On the right, you could see parking's always been a problem in Newport Beach. That was probably around 1910. And they have the Dory Fisherman down there on the left-hand side. You could see here, this is the, this is the first, Newport's first downtown, how small it was. This is 1920, so this is 14 years after the city was incorporated. It was only a few blocks long on each direction. And you could see on the, in the left where McFadden Square is now, there, it was a bunch of one-story wooden buildings. They caught fire a lot, too. Oh, I want to see. And you could see, you could see the rail lines from the trolley and the, and the train. And so if you're driving through Newport and by the pier and all these crazy streets, I could never figure out why, who was the traffic engineer, what happened there. But those are trolley tracks and train tracks. So they're, they're crossing, and that's why when you go up approaching the pier, there's a big curved street there, and the buildings are curved, because they follow the train tracks and the trolley tracks. Then in 1923, first big announcement, big permanent building in where it's McFadden Square. Two locals decided to come together their two properties and build this building. Their initial plans were for shops, apartments, offices, a lodge, dining hall, and apartments. Oh, and one of the guys, one of the developers, A.W. Irwin, he was the town's largest Realtor, and his slogan was, "I never sleep." And he had billboards all over town, "I never sleep." He should have gotten some sleep because he died before this was completed. He had permanent sleep, I guess. This is the E.K. Stone Building where 21 Oceanfront is. This came along about three years later. You can read the tenants, malt shop, tackle shop, cafe, fish market, Theater Robbins Ford. They had one of their first shops there, hotels, offices, et cetera. This is it a few years after it was completed. It was designed by the same guy who, who designed the Bowers Museum in Santa Ana and the Santora Building in Santa Ana. Despite all that, it went bankrupt during the Great Depression, and the bank held on to it for six years because they couldn't find a buyer. McFadden Square 40s, go on. What happened? Initially, Fashion Island came, Newport Center came, the downtown shifted from the peninsula to this kind of glitzy new area. And so McFadden Square went through kind of a down period, let's say. And when you're aging and there's someone new on the scene, what do you do in Newport Beach? You get a facelift. So this is facelift number one for McFadden Square. It happened, and this is not, I just wanted you to look at this historical photo, obviously. Yeah. I know. Yeah. Property owners and the city split, a $3 million price tag for improvements. They were, they weren't, they weren't that significant. It was new sidewalks, lighting, and the quote, this is an interesting quote to me. It's, "This area being it was the founding site of the city, and yet it's probably the biggest embarrassment to the city and the greatest need of renovation. It's lost its glory." Since I have the slide up there, you can see, they used to have right here, this used to be an arch, archway to the pier. And it was, there's some photos I've seen of it. It's kind of a cool little feature. Second facelift is 2008. It was supposed to be for the Centennial, which would have been 2006. I'm not sure what happened there, but they're two years off. The Globe, the Labyrinth. I didn't know this until I visited there on the Fourth of July, but I didn't realize there are historical events all through that labyrinth. They're hard to see, and I think it could probably use some improvements, but that's my opinion. And then the last real addition is the Ben Carlson statue in 2006. There is one more facelift, maybe in the works, and I was going to leave it to the mayor to talk about that. McFadden Square.
Well done. Thank you, Bill.
Five minutes.
That's great. Nice history. And I think what, what Mr. Abdel was talking about is obviously, this is the birthplace of the original downtown of Newport Beach. Councilman Blom and myself are working on a project and going to go out to the public for input in the not-too-distant future, but we've got some architects and designers that are working on a re-imagination of McFadden Square. So I think it's a long time in need. The good news is our city and our police have done a fantastic job cleaning up that entire area. So if you haven't been down there recently, there is a reason to go down there. And we have a lot of business owners with 21 Oceanfront and Mario, what he's done with Dory Delli and everything. So he's done a good job improving that area, but the city can do more. So that's an area that we'll be focused on in the not-too-distant future. So thank you so much for the history of McFadden Square. Well done. Cool. Okay. Okay. Yep. Thank you, Amelia. It was great seeing you today. Well done. Come back. Okay, now's the time for council announcements, oral reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an item to be placed on future agenda. Councilmember Weigand, do you have any announcements or reports?
Yeah, I just want to use this time to give a couple shout-outs to our amazing team here at the city. On July 2nd, we received an email from our utilities chief, Mark McQuavick, saying a 24-inch major transmission line had been damaged by a HOG contractor up by HOG Hospital. And knowing what happened at Palisades Fire and, you know, all the things going on with water supply, that was of major concern. But a great report out that a team of seven was on that pretty much 24/7, and they accomplished fixing that by 2:00 a.m. on July 4th, which is a huge undertaking, and it caused no disruption to the city. So that's a, that's a pretty big deal for us and our utilities department. So Mark, if you could let the team know that we're grateful for that. And then obviously, without saying, on July 4th, our lifeguards were on overtime in extremely challenging conditions. They made 351 rescues alone on that day. Pretty impressive, guys. But 654 total rescues through Sunday and not one single drowning. So I think that's an amazing feat for our city, and you guys got to let them know that that's, that's, you know, hits here. I think that goes without saying. Mayor Stapleton and Councilmember Weber and I were at Ben Carlson's memorial, his last, site of his last rescue on Tower 17. That was on 5/18 on July 6. And we did 11-year memorial. So I see Gary here, and, you know, it's, it hits heavy when you see what went on the couple days before that with what they did for our city. So I think it's a big thing to go out there and pay recognition to, to somebody who gave his life protecting not just residents, but a lot of tourists that come to our city. So without being a shout-out to the chief, too, I think he had said that firefighters saw a 20% increase in emergencies from 2024. So 77 emergency incidences on July 4th and 183 total incidents over the three-day weekend. So busy, busy, busy for our public safety. And then obviously, our police guys were out on full effect. I ran into on Sunday a couple of the mounted guys, and it sounded like it was pretty crazy out there. So the fact that there wasn't major coverage in the news saying that there was a major incident, I think, is a big testament to the fact that RPD was out in full force, making sure that the Fourth of July was as best under wraps on a Friday, a holiday weekend. It's definitely a busy time out there, but your guys were, showed a lot of grit. And I know that there were some challenging moments throughout the night, but appreciate the hard work by RPD. So public safety, huge work this weekend. And I think all of us here are grateful that we're not seeing, you know, major incidents or chatter or huge things coming out of that. So I'm sure there'll be after-action items to discuss with all departments, but I think from, from my perspective, I think we have a world-class city with a world-class public safety, and really appreciative of all the, the hard work that went on this weekend. Just one other side note, my community, Dover Shores Mariners had a little Fourth of July parade. There was a lot of help by a lot of departments in the city from police, fire, recreation, Public Works, human resources. A lot of efforts were put on to help, just a small little effort. I know the city had their own stuff that some of our council members were at, but from my standpoint and perspective in Dover Shores, a lot of happy people. So thanks for the city for helping me with that.
Councilmember Berto, thank you.
This week, this past couple weeks, I attended the Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency meeting along with Councilmember Weigand and my Randall Preserve Advisory Committee field trip. Those were very helpful because I've heard from a few community members that they've seen or experienced or hear that there is an increase in homelessness in those areas. So it's helpful for me being on those agencies. We can narrow down what's happening there and continue our enforcement efforts that we have here in Newport. I also attended the Mr. Irrelevant banquet with many of my fellow council members, the Newport Beach Arts Exhibition, which was really fun. And then was super fun to attend the Relish Event, which is a reimagining of the Newport Beach Food and Wine Festival. And it was fun to present a proclamation to chef Jamie Quinn, who started that back up again. And then enjoyed the, many of the Fourth of July festivities, including the Fourth of July is for families down on the peninsula.
Terrific. Councilmember Grant?
Thank you. I also want to thank all of our public safety for all of the hard work. All of our staff over the last couple days have put in extra effort and great work in order to keep our city safe and sane, and that's greatly appreciated. Just lots going on in the city. I'll just mention a couple things. We did have our 23rd Annual Women in Government Lunch, bringing together women serving on boards, committees, and commissions, as well as staff and electeds for an opportunity to network and share about projects. It's a very homey experience that we do every year, and I want to thank the continuing efforts of some of our past board, commission, board members, committee members, or commission members, Deborah Moore, Ashley Johnson, Marie Kay Walker, and Kathy Harrison for coordinating that each year for us. And then I also wanted to mention the efforts of the library staff, the city arts commissioners, and the Arts Foundation volunteers for executing another annual Newport Beach Arts Exhibition. This is the 58th annual, I believe, and 58 years in a row, they've done a great job every year improving it and bringing a wonderful arts opportunity to our Civic Center. So thank you all for that.
Okay, terrific. Councilmember Blom?
Nothing, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilmember Weber?
Nothing.
Mayor Protime Quilman?
Thank you, Mayor. So in addition to a number of the events that my colleagues already mentioned, my family and I had a fantastic Fourth of July, kicked off by the fire department-led parade in our neighborhood, which is a wonderful tradition that we enjoy. I was sorry to miss the Employee Appreciation Luncheon, but had our annual OCOG budget meeting that unfortunately I could not miss. We also had a very eye-opening, sober-living task force meeting with some very personal testimony that was shared about the profit-driven industry that engages in these predatory practices and keeps addicts in this revolving door of business-operated residential recovery. And I also attended the wonderful tradition of the Ben Carlson Day at Junior Guards. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and a lot going on as the mayor. Obviously, there's a lot of events and ribbon cuttings, and, and the Fourth of July is no different. I just do want to congratulate again staff for all their hard work with the employee service awards. That was phenomenal. And to the team that put together Chief Boils and John Pope as the leaders. Well done. That was a lot of fun. Yeah, attended the Junior Guard picnic. That was great. Good job to the Salata family for Irrelevant Week. It was fun celebrating the last pick of the NFL Draft, Kobe Miner. I think he did a great job and represented his team, the New England Patriots, very well. So we'll see, looking forward to seeing his progress in the NFL. And I also attended the 58th Annual Art Exhibit, and congratulations to the Arts Commission for a successful event. I did attend Ben Day as well. So January was that second was Ben's birthday. So it was a lot of fun to be there. It seemed like it was all about Ben this week, which for good reason. I got to go out on sea watch. So went out with sea watch with Skeeter Leaper as our captain and Michael Vaughn as the lifeguard. And it was, it was phenomenal to see what you guys do on a daily basis to go out there in the water. The day before, they had 60 rescues, and when I was out there, we had zero. So I think they'd rescued everyone the day before, so no one else was getting in the water that day. But just a tremendous effort to our team and our lifeguards, what they do on a daily basis with all of that. So that was a lot of fun. We did a flyby to acknowledge the legacy of Ben Carlson that, that day at 11 o'clock. So that was great to do that. Fourth of July, Sean Levin, congratulations to you and your team, Public Works, or obviously, our Parks and Rec, everyone who helped close the streets on the peninsula for an hour to do a bike parade. We had hundreds of people show up. I think it was the biggest one ever in the last 14 years. And the sun came out before 8:00 a.m. for the first time. So it was a beautiful day. I also attended the American Legion, the Old Glory Boat Parade. So it was a lot of fun going around the entire harbor, spent three hours with our American Legion folks, and that was great. And then just another shout-out to our first responders, our police, and our fire and lifeguards, all that you guys did this Fourth of July weekend to help keep us safe. I know there was a lot going on on the peninsula, and we'll continue to move the needle. But congratulations to all of you. There was a lot going on, including the fire yesterday in Laguna Beach. And I know we had our police and fire were on the scene. Justin Carr was the first one down there, I think. He was having a meeting and happened to be on scene. He was texting us when he was there. We're like, how did you show up so fast? But that was a five-acre burn and mutual aid. You guys did a terrific job. That could have been much, much worse. So, so well done. And then this Thursday, here at City Hall, we have our first ad hoc committee meeting at 3:00 for Lower Castaways. So that'll be fun. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters are listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended and recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay, terrific. Councilmember Weigand, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items 1 through?
Okay, terrific. Councilmember Weigand, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items 1 through 15?
No, I do not.
Councilmember Berto?
No.
Councilmember Grant?
No.
Councilmember Blom?
I have none.
Councilmember Weber?
None.
Mayor Protem Kleiman? Pulling.
Yes, I'll pull item number 12.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
I, I moved the consent calendar with the exception of item number 12, which was pulled by me and noting minor edits to item number one, the minutes.
Okay, terrific. Do we have a second? Okay, terrific. Is my understanding that government law requires an oral report given on the item number five? So Ms. Finnegan, do you want to give us an oral report on item number five?
Yes, Mayor, I will. Consent calendar item number five is a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Police Management Association and a salary schedule adjustment for the police chief and the assistant police chief. Because the salary and some benefits provided to the police chief and the assistant chief are tied to the Police Management Association, the Brown Act requires the announcement of these changes. And those changes are specifically, the police chief and the assistant police chief's salary and the corresponding salary schedule would be adjusted to reflect a cost of living increase of 4% and an equity adjustment of 11% effective June 28, 2025, and cost of living increases of 4% on July 11, 2026 and July 10, 2027. Also, the CalPERS percentage contribution for the police chief and the assistant police chief will be 13.6%. Future CalPERS contribution rates will be tied to the rates paid by members of the Police Management Association.
Okay. Who seconded this? I'm sorry. You did. Okay, great. All right. Okay, so now we're going to go to public comments on consent calendar items number one through 15, but not 12 since that's been pulled. Do you have any public comments on items 1 through 15?
Seems a little bit informal here. Are these general public comments?
On the consent calendar items.
Only because I wanted to do general public comments initially and then the one about the amendment on the employee things.
So you can talk about the amendment on the employee contracts now and then come back later to general public comments?
Either way, I just, I don't know. I just have two separate comments that I need to make.
Right now, you'd be making comments on the employee agreements?
Okay, I saw that was afterwards. So while my general public comments would have had context for this, but it seems like, because I spoke here last year, I submitted a document to you guys. I could be dealing with, there's so many amendments for these two employees because of the corruption that I'm dealing with here. I'm going to provide context related to Irvine, where I spoke two days there, submitted comments. They didn't do anything. That resulted in criminal infractions. I, I gave paperwork to ChatGPT and Jim Ryan. They both said, well, that's multiple criminal infractions. I didn't have time to review the paper that I gave to you guys last year. But it's like, well, I know what's going on related to Lord Katy Perry, Taylor Swift, that at least some of you knew. That's like, well, that's the kind of corruption that I'm dealing with. And I'm just, I just wanted to at least bring into question today why there's eight amendments for, for, for one organization, four for another, where a lot of cities don't have any at all.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Adam Leverens, I wanted to start with item six on consent. It's a resolution requesting Cal Employee Retirement System Contract Amendment to eliminate cost sharing for citywide miscellaneous tier-one employees. Some remarks from the staff materials for that reference other labor negotiations that are going on. Says the city has entered into good faith labor negotiations and tentative agreements with most of the groups and employees to reduce or eliminate the amount of employee cost sharing set forth in those agreements. As I understand from the materials, public employees currently contribute 2.42% of their pay towards their pensions. As a private citizen, towards social security, people contribute 6.2. We heard during the invocation, mention of how beautiful this is. I mean, look at the weather for the past 10 days, the next 10 days. You've got your police and fire in these dark uniforms. They don't have to stand out in the sun in, in Vegas or Bakersfield. It, it just seems to me that asking public employees to contribute to their own retirement accounts makes sense. I mean, this is a wonderful place to be and to work. I would be thankful for my job. Those of you that have been here for a while have heard this from me before. I served eight years as an elected official in a little small community organization for a bunch of mountain communities, up to six meetings a day, writing legal briefs, doing oral argument before panels of judges, testifying at hearings officers. For my eight years, my total pay and compensation was $0.00. I think civil service really needs to be more about service than enrichment. And, and this is in consent. You're going to vote for this, but next time you have opportunity to look in the mirror, really ask yourself if the fiscal conservatives I've heard many of you profess to be is who you think is looking back at you. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comments on the consent calendar? Okay, so you know any other public, or any additional comments on council? Okay, seeing none, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we're going to go to consideration on items removed from the consent calendar. Item number 12 was removed by Councilmember Kleiman, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Kleiman. Would you like a staff report on that?
No staff report. And I'll be brief. I just want to make a few comments. So I, of course, fully support the deployment of school resource officers on our school campuses as well as the city's financial contribution to the program. I view this arrangement as an essential partnership to keeping our children secure. And I want to say I appreciate the district working with us these last few months to revise and enhance this MOU to add more coverage and include components to create a more effective and comprehensive SRO program, such as training and annual threat assessments. That said, I believe that the agreement still fails to address a key issue, which is integral to ensuring student safety. And that's the installation of a robust, modern camera system on all campuses with provisions to provide real-time access to the police department in the event of a critical incident or other emergency. In my opinion, again, there's no objection or excuse that has been or could be raised that could possibly negate this necessity in today's world. I think we cannot afford to have these campuses be blind spots. All of that being said, I certainly would invite the district back to the table as our partner ensuring, in ensuring the safety of our students. And on that note, I would love to hear from our police chief on this.
Thank you, council. So per what the Mayor Protem said, real-time access to cameras, we've invested a lot of time and thought and resources into expanding our technology footprint from drones to our FUSIS video integration unit. We have traffic cameras. We have license plate reader cameras. So having a robust, an accessible camera system on school campuses certainly would be consistent with the efforts that we're making as a city and would provide us real-time access to information to better respond to critical incidents or any, any other type of incident going on on our school campuses. And all of that, obviously, with the ultimate goal to ensure the safety of our students and faculty on those campuses. So we would be supportive of working with the district and having access to those cameras when, when they're online.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Anything else on your end? No? Okay. Okay. Does anyone else have any comments up here?
I just wanted to add that, thank you. And I think that recognizing that the real-time, more robust cameras was something that I was very passionate about getting on the school district. And I know they've been working on it for about a year and a half. So I think I'm hopeful that in late August, early September, when those have been online, we can see how they work. We can figure out the best way to work with the district to integrate them. So that way we kind of know what technology we're talking about on both sides. The more, from a practical perspective.
Okay. Any other comments up here?
Okay.
I'll go, I'll go ahead and speak. So I was actually a sophomore or junior when the SRO program started at CDM. So I remember it vividly and I echoing a lot of Mayor Protem Kleiman's thoughts. I love having our officers on campus more than anything. I think it is a crucial tool that we have. And I think the camera access goes hand in hand with making sure those SROs have every possible resource necessary to keep the students safe. And from my perspective, I think that's the only thing that matters. So I fully support the SROs on campus. I love it. I think it's a wonderful program. I just would love to have you guys get every resource possible to make sure that you can do that role in whatever situation.
Councilmember Grant?
Just quickly, I did, after seeing this agenda item and reviewing it, had an opportunity to speak with members of our police department as well as members from the district. And it's my understanding that this is actually occurring, that there is an effort on behalf of the district now, I think as maybe Councilmember Berto suggested, that the cameras are being researched and will be shortly implemented and that the district is going to come back to the table with the police department to integrate the efforts and make sure that this does occur. Because I think that we're probably all in accord here that the safety of our children in our schools is of the utmost importance. And we know that our public safety officials are working towards that with the district. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so there's no issue that we're not going to get access to those cameras. It's just a timing issue. Right now, we have the SRO contract and we're looking at maybe subsequent agreements that would engage on the camera portion. Is, is that the case?
I hope so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I failed to introduce our detective sergeant, Jenny Kreske, who supervises our school resource officers.
Terrific.
Jenny.
Did you, yeah, Assistant City Manager?
Yes, actually, as of today, the district does have a draft MOU specifically related to the cameras that they would like to work with the city on to complete that, bring that back to council.
Okay, good. Councilman Blom? After public comments, okay. All right, nothing else up here? Okay, now we'll hear from the public comments on this item. Thank you, chief.
I didn't have anything prepared. I didn't know I was going to do this, but my issues actually encompass what's going on there because we didn't have cameras when I was growing up in school. We didn't have tinted bus windows. And I'm being told by, by my elders when I was younger that they were safe, didn't lock their doors. The police chief already said I was absurd today. And I'm not even going to go at right now. But the point is, is that should you only be dealing with putting more cameras in the schools? Maybe we need to readdress why we're doing stuff like that, listening to people up at the top, you know, micro. You know what it is? It's somebody that knows the elephant is there and they're telling the three blind men who knows what. And it's like, well, we're doing all of this, but maybe why aren't we addressing what's really going on? Oh, well, we're trying, Mr. Thunderstriker. Okay, well, we're going to get to that within the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruth Kobiyashi. And in 2018, I spent a great deal of time here and at the school district advocating for a third SRO. Because at the time, when my kids were just matriculating out of Coronel Mar High School, we didn't have full-time coverage there. It was four days a week. And the number of hours where there was no PD on campus was alarming to some of us. So kudos to the leaders back then who approved that. And I'm here not specifically to address the cameras. I believe you're going to be successful in getting that worked out with the district. I affirm the importance of that. But my purpose today is just to thank you for your continued support of school safety through the agreement with the school district for our school resource officers. With this agreement, it is expected that Newport Harbor and Coronel Mar High Schools will have SRO and Newport Beach Police Department presence, excuse me, Monday through Friday during all school hours. So thank you again for your commitment to public safety. And I've known all of the SROs on the Coronel Mar campus while my kids were there and they're top-notch. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Councilman Blom?
Thank you. And Ruth, I agree with you wholeheartedly and I'll keep the mixed metaphors out of my speech right now. Thank you for Mayor Protem and Councilmembers Berto and Weber bringing this through, having diligent eyes on it and really looking at contracts as they should be diligently and with a very critical eye. So as we look towards what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish with these SROs on campus, I think it's very important to realize that we never want to address the fact that we're preparing for the worst. But that is the case that's in front of us right now. And so as it was brought up, the cameras and accessibility, we want to make sure that if anything ever happens within our schools, we have the very best resources to respond. We do not want to send our entire force to something that is not necessary, but we want to know exactly what we're sending them to do. That's really the crux of where this has been going back and forth. And, you know, I, I agree with the Assistant City Manager and her assessment that this is an entirely separate MOU where we have to start looking at the security of our schools as something that directly relates to how we respond to such things. So I'm in full support of the SROs. I think they're an amazing piece of what our schools in Newport have. I think we have the greatest police force on this planet and I'm so thankful that our officers are there. I would like to make sure that the district is willing to work with us going forward and that these MOUs come to pass that that level of access is very, very important. I'm sorry, is that, is my time currently up?
Yeah.
Three minutes, wow. I didn't realize it came so quickly. Wow. At the, at the end of it all, I think it's a very simple understanding. When something happens, the police take over. So the city is not asking a lot. We're asking the school district to come back to the table and make sure that they're working with us on this. That's the simple understanding. It's one of the few things in this city we don't control. The schools are controlled by the district. We just want to make sure that the safety and security of our children is front and foremost to everything we do. And I think that's the only level of pushback and the only reason that anything's been pulled up here. We're concerned about it. It's a real-world problem and we want to make sure that our police force has every single possible piece at their discretion to make sure that we keep our safety in mind. So thank you for everyone working and I'm happy to support the SRO program.
Okay, terrific. Any other comments by, any council members? Okay, seeing none, I'll look for a motion on this item.
So I will, one, look forward to those good faith negotiations with the district on the cameras. And I will go ahead and move to approve this agreement as it is currently.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, Councilmember Berto seconds. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, terrific. Now I'll ask for public comments on non-agenda items.
Public comments are invited on agenda and non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Terrific.
I am Euphana Thunderstriker. I spoke here last year, cognitive mess illusion, why America attacked Iran and why Katy Perry and Orlando Boom split and why Taylor Swift switched from country to pop.
Sir, sir, so any comments you make have to be about Newport Beach. It has to be within the subject matter jurisdiction.
Well, they are. I'm trying to get to context related to the document that I submitted them last year, where I'm implying that they are, they violated criminal infractions. And if you're the city attorney, you're also involved. I just found out today, based on the nine amendments, that you were second-
Or please address the council. Don't yell at our attorney.
That he was second responsible to, to the mayor of last year. And exactly what I am dealing with is that I need to, I need to establish a validity based on what I am saying. When I'm saying, well, I'm here in Newport Beach because of a music industry scandal, well, that does concern you. When I'm in your city, that concerns you, even if I'm just a citizen- When I'm in your city, that concerns you, even if I'm just a citizen saying, well, you know, I was walking down here and people are harassing me, but is that appropriate? When it's like, well, what's really going on is a lot more organized than that. And it's like, now I'm being told that I can't speak about anything other than Newport Beach when everywhere in America, you can, and you can talk to city councils about America. I mean, it's called general public comment on non-agenda items. Usually it's specified, you can address the council on any matters, not on the agenda up to three minutes. Is that mistaken? Am I, am I wrong that that changed?
It has to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, though.
And I'm talking about corruption in this community. I'm talking about corruption on a national level for the whole reason I am talking to this community. And I think that I'm going to, I already submitted public comments zero-one related to some of the things I'm doing here. And I don't know, I tried to verify that those went through because I'm getting oppressed. My emails are getting hacked, but I can, I can do something again before next week to provide context for why I'm not allowed to talk about what I want to talk about when I walk to this podium. So to be more specific, I submitted a document or two last year to this council related to problems why I was in Newport. Those problems started 13 years ago, when I tried to enter the music industry. I encountered some corruption between a lot of people, but most people know about Katy Perry and Taylor Swift, the feud between them. Well, that's, that's fake. Katy Perry is probably working for the Italians. And, and it's called cognitive mass delusion when everybody is listening to other people about what's really going on, and that's affecting America to the point where we were a society that just a short time ago didn't lock their doors and we now have the highest incarceration rate in the world. And it's like, well, the music industry has been weaponized against America. These are things appropriate for the city attorney. And once you know that I've been doing public comments for three years at many different venues, you don't have to know that the council members probably already know some of them knew before I ever got here.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In the announcements earlier this afternoon, the mayor mentioned that what you call the ad hoc committee that is considering possible ideas for the use of our Lower Castaways Park, in addition, possibly looking for a location for a public city swimming pool, will be having its inaugural meeting this Thursday at 3:00 PM in Bay E of the City Hall. Those who look at the city calendar, which has many blank days on it, will find on that particular Thursday, at exactly the same hour, also in Bay E, but this meeting is downstairs. Upstairs, there's a meeting scheduled for the Water Quality Coastal Tidelands Committee. Number one, I think there may be some overlap between members of the public who might be interested in the discussion about Lower Castaways, who would also be interested in coastal tidelands and water quality issues. And equally importantly, the two committees have a great overlap in the council members who are on them. And in fact, two of the council members are on both committees. You inherit some kind of special magical powers that allow you to be in two places at once, be upstairs and downstairs at the same time, that the public doesn't have those powers. And so I would think for the benefit both of the council members and the public, considering all the open days, especially in the following week, somebody might want to consider rescheduling one of those two meetings. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good comment. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to now go into the public hearing item, ordinance 2025-11. This is the fire hazard safety zone. I think we've got our fire marshal and our fire chief to give us a brief presentation.
I think we have a couple of conflicts to announce.
Oh, of course, yes, let me get to that. Do councilmembers have any conflicts regarding this item? Councilmember Wagon.
I don't.
Councilmember Barto? Councilmember Grant?
I do, based on possible financial impact to a business partner and it's that partner's residence.
Okay, Councilmember Blom?
Fire free, baby.
You what?
Uh, no.
Wow, that's impressive. Councilmember Weber?
Uh, yes, a conflict due to my personal residence.
Mayor Protem Kliman?
Ditto for me.
Ditto for you. And then we'll leave four of us here. Enjoy. Okay, uh, yeah, the floor is yours. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and four remaining members of council. I asked Amelia earlier if she wanted to do the staff report, she said yes, but her parents made her leave, so I brought James Gillespie, our fire marshal, with us. And we, this conversation has been taking place for years to adopt these maps, and James has met with almost all of you individually and done several public outreaches here in the community room and at Oasis and a couple other events, Speak Up Newport and some others. So we've done quite a bit of outreach as much as we can, and I'll let James take it from here with his PowerPoint and explain where we are with the adoption.
Thank you, Chief Boils, Mayor Stapleton, council. So just to start out with the history and kind of how we got here to where we're going to be adopting these maps. Back in 1992 with the Oakland Hills Fire, the Assembly passed AB 337, which required the state to develop maps for LRA, what I'll refer to as LRA, but that is local responsibility area. So when I say it throughout the presentation, just to kind of shorten the word, LRA is what we are, a local responsibility area, as opposed to an SRA, which is a state responsibility area. So it required the different, the state to map those for the different cities, and we had to adopt those, but it was only the very high fire hazard severity zone at the time. And then in 2021, they passed AB 642 that required cities, or the state to then map the moderate and high, as opposed to just the very high. SB 63 mandated the adoption, and AB 211 required that cities adopt the recommendations within 120 days. It does not allow for local agencies to reduce the severity zone that the state recommends. It only allows you to add to it. So CalFire used the best available science. That included fire history, vegetation, flame length, blowing embers, proximity to wildland, terrain, and weather. And when they transmitted the maps to us on March 24th, we had them posted online for a public review by March 25th that allowed the public to access it. Here you can see a black hatch line over red zone and gold zone and yellow zone. That was the original map that was recommended back in 2010. And this is an overlay with the new map, and we'll have the new map here shortly. What I want to note about this is that with this legislation, it does not allow input by local agencies to the state with regards to those maps. So when they were transmitted to us, they were final maps that did not allow for any comment from the state or our review. You could see this is what was transmitted to us, along with the GIS files for us to be able to map it. And we have our new fire hazard severity zone that includes very high, high, and moderate. Additionally, with that, when we say that these bills were specific to the LRA that we discussed, those bills really did just deal with this, separate from any state responsibility area. So currently, the very high fire hazard severity zone that we've known for well over 10 years only has 2,825 parcels in it, and they will be increasing to a total of about, will be increasing about 3,413 parcels in all zones to a total of 6,238. The very high having the most restrictive standards, the high having a little bit less restrictive, and the moderate only requires that we adopt the maps as a local agency with no defensible space, home hardening, or other items required for them. But again, our very high zone that would be the most affected increased by about 1,142 parcels. MBFD held public education events for the new maps on May 19th here at City Hall and June 12th at Oasis Senior Center. Additionally, the May 19th event was posted on the City of Newport Beach YouTube channel for additional review and on the Newport Beach fire prevention website and fire website. So lastly, what this will change for our city when it comes to the local responsibility area, the top things I look at that will affect our residents immediately would be defensible space requirements and the looming Zone Zero that's coming from regulations developed by the Board of Forestry. A hazard disclosure, which is what occurs when they have a transaction or sale of a home, they must disclose that they are meeting the current defensible space requirements of the city, and the fire department has to go review and sign off on that. And then also, if any homes are built or face a significant, called Chapter 7A of the Building Code, but it's construction for homes that are built in fire-prone areas, and it's just a little bit more restrictive. That'd be in the very high. In the high, the biggest portion's going to be the hazard disclosure that they'll have to do at a real estate transaction. And then again, any construction that occurs, significant remodels, they'd have to build to a more restrictive standard. Do I have any questions?
Any questions up here? Councilmember Barto?
This is like a practical question. Do we get to use these safety zones and, you know, any mitigation efforts to send it back to insurance for those homeowners kinds of things? I feel like there's ways we could work together to help bring, show insurance companies that we're doing good faith and brush mitigation or things like that for homeowners.
So that's a very great question. And so these maps are separate from insurance maps. These are hazard maps specifically. Insurance uses a separate map system, a risk map, whether using State Farm or AAA or Mercury, they pay different companies to develop those risk maps for them. We have had discussions with many of those companies to figure out, as we perform vegetation treatment, or a homeowner upgrades and performs the upgraded vents or non-combustible roof or a Zone Zero, how does that get reported back to where when an underwriter polls their risk score, that risk score is therefore lowered by it? There's not a methodology for that currently, but it's something that's definitely a topic in the state, but it's a conversation we've, we're about four meetings in with one of the big companies that do it, trying to figure out a way to where we can report that.
That's great work, thank you.
Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, I want to take that moment too, to thank you guys for the hard work. There was a lot of outreach that's been going out related to this, and our fire marshal has been at a lot of community events that all councilmembers have been present at. City Attorney, could you just reemphasize why three of our councilmembers had to recuse themselves? Because I think all seven of us take this issue very seriously, and we, I don't want any perception to come out that they had to leave because obviously there's some monetary, you know, value to their homes in the fire maps, but just explain why.
So the state creates these maps, and you can't reduce the size of the severity areas, but you can expand it. And they're in areas where they could potentially be expanded into or change their zones. So that's the reason that they have a conflict here today as opposed to any other reason. It's just because you have the ability to expand the zones. It might understand as the fire department recommends against that.
Yeah, we're not expanding any of the zones currently.
Okay, great. I just, having three gone from this discussion, I think they would find it very valuable to be present at this, and that just, that's the law, so we have to abide by that. Do you have any action items or recommendables that you think we should, you know, kind of keep in mind moving forward into this new phase of year-long fire danger and, you know, and I don't want to put you on the spot because I'm sure there's ideas that maybe differ than some of our philosophical viewpoints when it comes to that, but I think it's important just to kind of keep, you know, thinking. Unfortunately, the legislature acts every time something happens, and usually that's not for the greater, and they overreact sometimes, and we're kind of seeing that right now in the legislature with tons of bills, some good, some bad, some excessive. But I think it's important to kind of stay cognizant, especially as we are proximity to, as we saw Laguna Beach. I mean, when would you ever think there was going to be a fire in this time of year? It's usually San Ana wind condition when we kind of all think fire. So it's getting seasonally, from seasonally to year-long, and I just want to make sure that we're cognizant, and I think all of us are paying attention to what happened in, you know, the last round of fires, but we don't want to overact, or we don't underact either. So it's a long-winded ask here, but, you know, just keep mindful of ideas that we can pursue as policymakers for the city, and I think we're staying on top of it, but we're going to trust you as to kind of come up with some ideas to help us move into the future.
Certainly, and I think we'll have that, a really good foundation for that going forward. We're currently in the process of completing some fuel, significant fuel modeling for the entire city. That also includes fire pathway and vegetation treatment plans to see where our risks lie, whether it be in San Ana wind event, an onshore wind event, or a non-wind event day like yesterday that Laguna saw, and where that fire would travel, what communities would be impacted by it, and what actions we can take to mitigate that, to really reduce that fire pathway travel and lower it. So once we, we know what that looks like, I think then we'll have a really solid plan to provide tangible benefits to the community, truly reduce risk, do what Councilmember Barto suggested as far as talking to insurance companies, like the fuel modification zones we already have, how do we reflect those? But I think we have a pretty solid plan going forward as far as what to do on that end, and then just continuing to educate homeowners on what they can do to do that parcel level mitigation, because it seems like the way the insurance industry is going is it's really focused on parcel level mitigation at that, at that level. Even AAA committed to writing insurance policies for three years if people met those standards and guaranteeing them insurance while others are being dropped. So certainly there's some avenues out there, but the community outreach and moving forward with that vegetation treatment plan and fuel modeling would be a big win for, for the city.
Yeah, and I think technology is ever-evolving, but I think we're staying on top of it. This council has already shown that we have a desire to continue and stay up with the latest and greatest technology, from the drones to AI technology, to cameras, to anything we can do to detect one fire but track its path. And I give accolades to your department for keeping an eye on that. So thank you.
Also, if I may, Mr. Mayor, because I know James won't say this specifically, but with regards to the policies and the conversations with the insurance companies, James is the president of our CalChief's organization, Fire Marshal Section, up and in working with Sacramento and doing the best we can up there and tying all the pieces from Northern and Southern California together. So he really is at the forefront of those conversations and the tip of the spear, if you will. So the things that you're hearing here are not your typical conversation with a fire marshal around the state. He's really kind of at the forefront of it. So when we talk about policy and we talk about insurance, he does have a pretty good handle on it, and he's, he's gathering ideas and input from all around the state.
Terrific, okay. Well, thank you. Any other public, or any, no comments up here? Okay, we'll go to public comments on this item.
I have a question that I may know the answer to, but when the materials speak of thousands of parcels, is it like if I look at a plat map and, you know, I can see where the parcels are? And you speak a lot about homes in the fire zone, and I'm assuming that some of this might be in what I think is referred to as Banning Ranch. So I'm curious, are there also parcels of acres and acres of urban wildland interface type stuff and arrange, say, from a quarter acre house to 50 acres of the Irvine Company and whatnot? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, it's a combination of open space and single-family homes. And when we say parcel, it is like looking at a map and it goes down to the parcel level. But the state did, you could be half-crossed between a very high and a high. The state didn't pull it to the parcel line.
Okay. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you to Fire Marshal Gillespie for all you did on this. I know it's a lot of work. Any additional comments or questions here? Okay, Councilmember Wagon, you want to make a motion?
I'd love to. I'll make a motion.
Perfect. Do I have a second? Okay, Councilmember Barto, seconds. Let's vote.
Motion carries four to zero with Councilmember Grant, Weber, and Mayor Protem Kliman recused.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, so now we're going to move on to current business, item number 17. I'll let for council colleagues to get seated. Item 17, Fourth Amended and Restated Employment Agreement for our city manager. I think it's obvious that our city manager is not here today. She is in jury duty, so she's fulfilling her civic duties. So she is not here to recuse herself since we're talking about her financial interests. So I'll look for an oral report on the agreement required by law. Mr. Harp, do you have a staff report?
Yes, I'll try to make it quick. There's 12 items I'm going to cover. So the first is the term of the agreement is from July 8th, 2025 to December 26th, 2025. Provides for a base salary of $345,782, which is tied to percentage salary increases for key and management for future COLA adjustments. A bi-weekly performance bonus of 2.5% of our adjusted base salary, as well as a separate lump sum, performance bonus of 2.5% of our adjusted annual base salary, and that's payable on December 26th. An annual physical exam, which is a reimbursement up to $1,250. A phone allowance, the same as other key and management employees. An auto allowance of $500 per month, up to $5,000 in attorney's fees to review the Fourth Amended Agreement. A city contribution to the 401A defined contribution plan of $70,000 for calendar 2025. The CalPERS contributions tied to the same formula percentage as key and management. And the severance benefit, which is equal to the city mayor's annual base salary, auto allowance, phone allowance, cafeteria allowance, and $24,000. auto allowance, phone allowance, cafeteria allowance, and $24,000, as well as administrative leave of 80 hours per year, and all the other benefits key and management employees receive, including holiday pay, holiday closure leave, if, if that comes to fruition, and participation in the Launa supplemental pension program. Thank you.
Any councilmembers have any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I still didn't see it when I came in the lobby. I informed the City Attorney by email this morning that in Section 7A, it mentions a separation agreement and release and a, for various documents that the City Attorney, City Manager has to sign to make this agreement effective. And one of them, it says it's dated till today. I have not seen those documents. I don't know if you have or not. And then in, in addition to the changes in the contract agreement that the City Attorney mentioned, there's one that I think is relevant in the Section 6 about the at-will employment relationship that the City Manager has with the city. Under the current agreement, the City Manager is simply warned that they could be let go at some time. The current one is quite different than that and says that if in the next six months you were to appoint a new City Attorney, we would continue to pay the former City Attorney, even though she would not be the City Attorney at that time, as the City Attorney. So we would be paying for two, and she would simply have to stay at home and be available by phone. That, that's a considerable change to me. And I think the whole thing is irresponsible. I don't know the background of this, but we currently have a City Manager who you've said is a very good City Manager. We have a contract with her that goes from now until the end of next year. The contract was presumably granted in good faith and she has, I understand, announced that she would like to retire at the end of this year. Under the current contract, she is welcome to do that, but her pay ends at the time of her retirement. This agreement now is having her continue to be paid, even though she will not be the City Manager next year. The City Manager is the highest paid employee in Newport Beach. It's good that we have a City Attorney. I'm a City Manager. In her absence, we have two very competent assistant City Managers that can fill in. What we don't need is to be paying two City Managers at the same time. And this, this agreement is changing our current good agreement that we have to what seems to me a bad agreement, where for the full length of next year, we'll be paying two City Managers, one who's actually working and one who is retired. I don't know why we're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Adam Leverens, this again, kind of ties into my early, earlier remarks about public employee compensation. There's a website called transparentcalifornia.com that I can type in anybody's name and supposedly get information sourced from public records. The, the current City Manager, according to that, her annual pay, as Mr. Mosher said, she's the highest paid civil servant in Newport, $506,797.39. That's about $50,000 higher than the agenda materials tonight indicate. I, I think that's probably a pension thing. I haven't figured that all out yet. As Mr. Harp mentioned, you know, in addition, $1,200 for an annual physical, a $500 auto allowance, a phone. It's like, how much money is enough? I mean, Mr. Harp's contract is up next. He gets about $100,000 less. It's like, I, I just think people should know, you know? I mean, if this is valid and she's, you know, I've seen her here many times, but it, I just, I don't think people realize how much money this actually is. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back here. Any additional council comments or questions? Okay. Do we have, I'll, you know, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment Restated Employment Agreement with our City Manager. Mr. Baum, seconds. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so I think it's important before moving on to the next item, I'd like to make a few comments. As Mayor, Councilmember, and member of the community, I've had the privilege of getting to know Grace Leong personally and professionally with over 30 years of dedication to public service. We are truly fortunate to have her serve as our City Manager for the past seven years here in Newport Beach. While her retirement is well deserved, we are grateful that she has agreed to continue serving through December 26th of this year to support a smooth transition. Grace is not here tonight, but if she was, I would tell her her leadership and contributions have left a lasting impact on our community. She will be leaving behind some very big shoes to fill and will be deeply missed. With the announcement of Grace's upcoming retirement, I'd like to take this opportunity to announce the City Council's game plan for transitioning to our next City Manager. As many of you know, Simone Georges has served Newport Beach since 2011 in several key leadership roles, including as building official, community development director, and most recently as Assistant City Manager. After screening all known candidates available for appointment to the position of City Manager, we have decided to move forward with the process for appointing Simone as the next City Manager effective December 27th, 2025. The City Council will consider this appointment at its July 22nd, 2025 meeting. Before turning this over to any of my council colleagues for comment, I think it's important for Grace to know that we are especially pleased that she has shown the foresight to invest in staff development and will be working closely with our entire leadership team to ensure a seamless transition. Any other council colleagues make any comments? Councilmember Grant? Do you want to say anything?
Okay. I would say first of all, it's wonderful to know that we have such a great succession plan in place and that Grace's leadership has been instrumental in that succession plan. We have a wonderful staff here in the city, top to bottom, and we've all been the benefit of working with everyone on the staff. And to see this all come together with a very, in a very, you know, fluid manner and very agreeable manner is a testament to Grace's leadership all these years. And it's too bad that she's not here, but we will be able to thank her personally. And I look forward to, you know, working with our new leadership.
Terrific. Okay. With that, we'll move on to item 18, under current business. This is the Eighth Amendment and Restatement Employment Agreement for our City Attorney. Mr. Harp, my understanding is that you will be recusing yourself based on financial interests in the proposed agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, terrific. As noted earlier, an annual, an oral report of the agreement is required by law. So Ms. Finnegan, do you want to read a staff report?
I will be reading that, Mayor.
Thank you.
The proposed agreement with the City Attorney provides for a term from July 8th, 2025 through December 30th, 2028, a base salary of $322,752, and a corresponding salary schedule adjustment with future increases after July 8th, 2025, tied to any percentage salary schedule or cost of living adjustment provided to key and management employees. An annual lump sum performance bonus of 2.5% of the City Attorney's adjusted annual base salary payable on the next normal payday that includes December 28th, a phone allowance that is equal to the phone allowance provided to management employees, an auto allowance of $500 per month, an annual city contribution to the City Attorney's 401A defined contribution plan that is equal to half the federally set limit for these plans. So that contribution in 2025 would be $35,000. A Calpers contrib, an employee paid Calpers contribution tied to the same formula or percentage contribution as is applied to tier one non-safety key and management employees. A reduction of the severance benefit from a maximum of 18 months of his base salary to 12 months if he is terminated without cause. Administrative leave of 80 hours per year, and all other benefits received by key and management employees, including holiday pay, any holiday closure leave, and participation in the Launa supplemental pension program.
Okay, terrific. Any council members have any comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go out to public comment on this item.
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. The details of the contract seem to have been worked out in closed sessions, so the public did not really have a lot of input on this. It seemed to me on the previous contract, the council was kind of boxed in by an extremely generous severance package that had been proposed there of pay of 18 months. And it's good to see here that it's being reduced down to 12 months. I would suggest perhaps that the council could have even considered a shorter time, like six months. None of the other city employees, as far as I know, except these very high up ones, get any severance pay at all and they're terminated without cause. And the, the, oh, I won't go into that any further. The other comment I would make about this is a change I believe you made the last time you amended this contract, which I did not really understand, and I still don't understand it at all, which is in Section 3. Section 3D calls for an annual review of the employee, in this case, the City Attorney's performance. Usually there would be, it's good that you do the annual review. Usually there would be something tied to the annual review, like they would get a bump up in pay or a bonus of some kind if they had done well or achieved goals. But since the last amendment, Section 3E gives the City Attorney an automatic performance bonus of 2.5%, even if the performance evaluation is bad. And so I do not understand, I think Councilman Wagon didn't understand at that time either. Does not make sense to me that you have an automatic bonus. You have a review and then a bonus based on it, and yet the bonus is automatic even if the review is bad. Does not make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Okay, seeing none. Any additional council comments or questions? Okay, let's vote. Oh, I guess I'll need a motion. You know, I'll go ahead and make the motion for the, huh? Okay, Noah seconds. All right, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, terrific. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for a motion for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Okay, hearing none. Tonight, we're going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Ray Cohen. I would like to ask Councilmember Grant to speak on the adjournment this evening in memory of Ray Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. We adjourned tonight in memory of Ray Ann Cohen, a Newport Beach resident of 60 years and a beloved community leader who recently passed away at the age of 89. Ray was born in Milwaukee and raised in Michigan. She met her husband Stan in high school, and they were married for 62 years and raised three children together. In 1965, they moved to Newport Beach where Ray dedicated herself to community service and civic life. Ray's many contributions to Newport Beach include President of the Friends of the Library, PTA President at Newport Harbor High School, Board Member and Sisterhood President at Temple Shalom, Chair of the City's Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission for eight years, co-founder of the Mariners Fourth of July Parade, volunteer for the Assistance League, co-owner of a music school where she offered piano and guitar lessons to generations of local children, and she was the establishing founder of Heritage Point, a local senior living facility. However, Ray's most visible legacy is the Newport Theater Arts Center, which she helped found in 1979. With no background in theater, she took on the challenge of helping launch a community playhouse that has evolved into a treasured community gem. She immersed herself in the theater for nearly 40 years up until almost the day she passed. She mentored actors, directors, and volunteers, always with the belief that everyone had talent waiting to be discovered. For her tireless service, Ray was honored with the Silver Anchor Award from the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce in 1986, and the Sunshine Award in 2006. Those who knew her best know she never did it for the accolades. She will be remembered throughout our community as a generous mentor who saw the best in people and encouraged dreams. She is survived by her three children, five grandchildren, and two sisters. Services are held on Friday, July 11th, at 10:00 AM at Pacific View Memorial Park in Corona del Mar. Her legacy will continue through every person she lifted up, every organization she strengthened, and every dream she helped bring to life.
Well said. I'll just end with, this is all about the year to celebrate Newport, and I can't think of a better way to celebrate in her honor, her memory tonight. And Newport Beach is a better community because of Ray Cohen and what she's done, and her legacy would live on. And I think we'd all hope to have a legacy as strong as hers one day. So, well said. Gone too soon, but a legacy nonetheless. So with that, we'll stay adjourned. Thank you.